Good evening and welcome to the October 19th, 2020 meeting of the Solon Board of Education. Mr. Pecan, we call the roll please.
Mrs. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mrs. Glavine.
Here.
Mr. Patton.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our first opportunity for public comment. In accordance with Board Policy 0169, this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Due to the virtual nature of the following meeting and in accordance with state law, we are foregoing the traditional period of public comment. Should anyone from the public have comments that they would like to share with the board, please email those comments to info@solonboe.org. Again, that email address is info@solonboe.org. Are there any public comments for this evening that have come in? Seeing none, we'll have another opportunity later in the meeting. Just as a reminder to our audience, board members receive and review the agenda and the accompanying explanation during the week prior to the Monday board meeting. Treasurers' Report, Item A1, Approval of Minutes. Recommended motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 5, 2020. May I have a motion please?
Move.
Moved by Mrs. Thomas.
Second.
Second by Ms. Jones. Are there any additions, corrections?
Ms. Glavine, this are very light, it's very light obviously this time around. Just some more signage that we had to get some.
No, we're in.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, no.
So sorry.
You moved past it already.
Going too quick.
Going too quick.
Apologize.
We'll do this one first. If there's no additions or corrections, Mr. Pecan, will you call the roll please?
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine.
Yes. Item A2, Approval of Bills. Recommended motion to approve the payment of bills totaling $4,891.49 as noted in enclosure A2. Motion please.
We'll move.
Second by Mr. Heckman, second by Mr. Patton. Mr. Bolden, now.
Yes, Mrs. Glavine. This is a, this is a light week. The only larger ticket item was some finals, and I don't want to say final because you never know, additional signage that we needed in some places as we were looking in the buildings prior to opening our middle schools where we wanted to identify specific locations for traffic pathways, reminders to wash, all those kinds of things. So it was additional signage that we needed to put up in other places in the district.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Pecan.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine.
Yes, thank you. That concludes the Treasurers' Report. Moving into the Superintendent's Report. Item B1, COVID-19 Substitutes. Recommended motion to approve the following individuals as COVID-19 building substitutes for the remainder of the 2020-21 school year. May I have a motion please?
Some move.
Moved by Ms. Jones, second by Mrs. Thomas.
Yes, Mrs. Glavine, these are, as we had mentioned at our last meeting, we have identified specific subs that will be in-building, waiting to fill in where needed should people be out, should there be absences due to COVID, due to quarantining, isolation, those sorts of things. And in order to secure those people, we keep them here working for us each day. And if they're not in a classroom, they're working in other roles as either an aide, as a hallway monitor, doing other work in the buildings as is needed. And these are the people that we're hiring to fill out the remainder of those positions that we need.
Does this pretty much go?
I think there might be one or two more. Sometimes, sometimes we might lose one. One might say, "I'm going to do another job," or something like that. So we might see other COVID subs from time to time, but I believe this is the bulk of them.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Pecan, will you call the roll please?
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine.
Yes. Item B2, Substitutes. Recommended motion to approve the following individuals as substitutes on an as-needed basis for the 2020-21 school year. Motion please.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Patton, second by Mr. Heckman.
Ms. Glavine, these are our normal subs.
Great.
They're the subs that we use on a day-to-day basis if you need that. We are always in need of subs and as we move on to everybody moving into in-person learning this week, we're going to need more of those subs as well as we go through. Because even though we have a COVID sub, if that COVID sub is going one place, we might put that COVID sub in and then bring this sub in to fill in for some other role to go through. So we need subs. If you're interested, please go online to our site and apply.
Very good, thank you. Any questions? Call the roll please.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine.
Yes. Item B3, Home Instruction Tutor. Recommended motion to approve Tony Delallo as a home instruction tutor for the 2020-21 school year. Motion please.
We'll move.
Moved by Mr. Heckman, second by Mrs. Thomas.
Yes, Mrs. Glavine. In the instance of we have a student that's not able to access the curriculum through the normal methods that we have, and they're out for some reason for a significant period of time and they still can't access the curriculum, we need to hire a home instruction tutor to help address that particular need for that student. And then when they're done addressing that need, that contract is done. But they need to be approved by the board.
Good, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Pecan.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine.
Yes. Item B4, Supplemental Contracts. Recommended motion to approve supplemental contracts for the following individuals and they are listed below. May I have a motion please?
Some move.
Moved by Ms. Jones, second by Mr. Patton.
Yes, you'll see here, we have reopened our weight training facilities and these are, these are the last of our athletic supplementals that we usually put on at the beginning of the year. But since we just brought onboard our weight training facility, that's where those contracts go.
It's the indoor facility, correct?
Yeah, it's for the indoor facility. But we've added very stringent controls in terms of the number of kids that can go in. It actually spreads out the amount of time that they're in the, in the weight training facility. So we need these people to help cover that, to help cover that space in the extended hours that we're using. You'll also see there is a CGR contract for one of our teachers who is actually teaching our third and fourth grade gifted students.
Oh, okay, yes. Good, thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Pecan?
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine.
Yes. Item B5, Tuition Reimbursement. Recommended motion to approve a tuition reimbursement to the following individual and they are listed below. May I have a motion please? Moved by Mr. Patton, second by Mr. Heckman.
Mrs. Glavine, this is previously approved and it does meet our district criteria.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Pecan, will you call the roll please?
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine.
Yes. That concludes our business items. Moving into the information items and other reports to the board. Item C1, Mr. Bolden.
Actually, this one is going to be Mr. Pecan.
It's going to be Mr. Pecan then.
So exciting.
Take it away.
This is one of those annual items. This federal, we receive X amount of federal grants, probably on average about seven or eight federal grants. Minimal funding. But what this says is, this says to the Ohio Department of Education and the auditors, in the event that we ever receive additional funding, that additional funding will be used for the existing positions that our local dollars are paying for. We don't have enough and we don't receive enough federal funds to pay for the, these positions that meet federal requirements. It's what we have.
Did we ever?
No, we never do.
No? I'm just curious.
We didn't from day one?
We have not.
When they started?
Well, I can't speak to 50 years ago or so, but from days, you know, years and years, decades. We have never received.
Day one, that was.
Oh. We do not receive enough funding. Usually we always talk about state funding, but of course, we, all districts pretty much receive a little bit of federal funding or a lot, depending on the district. And we're one of those little bit of funding districts.
Little bit of funding.
Yes.
Good. Are there any questions regarding this? Anyone? Good, thank you, Mr. Pecan. Item C2, Mr. Bolden.
Yes, this is talking about our AP Scholar Awards program. We have, as part of our schools, if you take an AP class, we make it a month C3?
Two.
I am having a day, guys. I am, I am having a day. Okay.
Mr. Bolden's usually a step ahead of us anyway.
I usually am. All right, so Unity Day. This is a, this is a real exciting thing that we do every single year. And it's, it talks about, it's on October 21st, and it's an anti-bullying program that we do every year. This year, it kind of takes a whole new flavor because there's, the specter of online bullying is even bigger now that so many of our kids are virtual going through there. So on October 21st, we do this Unity Day, which we give an opportunity for our schools to share positive messages about anti-bullying, to focus on kindness, being inclusive. And it's all part of October's National Bullying Month as we go through it. So we're all going to wear orange on the 21st to support Unity Day.
Is that like a universal thing, the orange? Is that?
It is.
Everywhere? I'm just curious. All right, good. So everybody knows to wear orange then on Wednesday? All right. Very good. No, C3.
Okay. C3. So as I said earlier, we as a district make it a requirement that all of our students take the AP exam if they're going to take an AP class. It's, not all districts do it that way. We do. But one of the things that's really exciting about our district is that we always perform at or above the national elite in terms of how we're doing. And this year is no different. We've had over, we've had 442 AP Scholar Honors to our high school students and the people who just graduated last year because kids can take AP courses all the way through their program, not just their senior year. This year, we had 12 AP Capstone Diplomas, which covers an extensive number of AP tests over a large period of time. We had three AP Seminar and Research Certificate Scholars. We had 67 National AP Scholars, 178 AP Scholars with Distinction, 73 AP Scholars with Honor, and 109 AP Scholars, just general AP Scholars. It's really just, it's absolutely an amazing effort. It shows the quality of the program that we have because anybody could take an AP class. You can't necessarily score a three, a four, or a five on your, on your AP test just because you take the class. It's amazing that just a decade ago, we were, we were at about 140 AP Scholars. And now 10 years later, we're at over 442. And we're actually higher this year than we were last year, even with everything that went on and how everything that transpired last year.
Are results were better this year or?
They were. It's just we're continuing that push for excellence and continuing to be successful. And we're really proud of the effort. And again, I know I say this each time, it's that partnership. It's our hard-working students, great parents, and our excellent teachers all working together to, to produce results like this.
Seventeen hundred, seventeen hundred and eighty-eight AP exams, that's pretty amazing.
And that's the part that people, that's why I always say everybody has to take one because there's so many tests, it makes it even harder to do this when you're taking that many tests.
May I ask a question? In the age of COVID, how are these administered?
Very carefully. What they've done is they've altered last year, at the end of last year, they made adjustments to the test so that they could be administered online. And you take the test in a shortened window of time to, to take the test. And people would say, "Oh, my gosh, people can cheat. How can you do that?" But the reality is, and I can attest to this, having a senior who just graduated and took many AP classes, AP tests are hard in terms of what you have to do. It's not just information regurgitation, it's information synthesis and analysis. They're very high-level exams that they go through. And so they did take them online in a specific timed window using a secure application as they were taking them. But that's how they did it last year. It remains to be seen what administration is going to look like in this coming spring, but we are eagerly anticipating APs discussing it with us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item C4.
Okay, Solon High School continues participation in our educational program. So we're once again partnering with University Hospitals Child Injury Prevention Project with the Ohio Department of Health. This is, basically what it is, is this is a program that we're using to help reduce incidents of motor vehicle accidents. It's a program that we've been doing for years. What it does is it helps to reduce things like distracted driving, to encourage seatbelt use, to go through, to follow all of those things, to encourage not driving past the curfew time. It's a, it's a really good program and it's really about trying to stop our kids from not, for us not having to have a headline or have to deal with one of our kids dying. And it's just, it's a good program.
I like about the cell phones.
Exactly.
That is a big program.
It is a big one.
All good. Great, thank you. Moving into Board Reports and other committee reports. Mrs. Siegel, anything additionally?
No, Mrs. Glavine.
Pecan?
No, Mrs. Glavine.
Mr. Bolden, anything additional?
Yes, what I'd like to do, we didn't make it a C item, but today marks the first day of return to school for our 7th through 12th graders in a hybrid model. Students A through K that opted for the in-person option are participating today. We're at about 30% capacity in the buildings, which enables us to have a much larger distance, especially in the population that is the most mobile and the most able to transmit, to transmit the virus. So we're at about 30% capacity. It went really well. Again, our parents are being very patient with us as our teachers are going through the anxiety of managing both in-person students and remote learners all at the same time. Based on anecdotal evidence in my conversations with principals, I think it's going a little better with our older kids and our, and our, and our high school teachers, simply because those students are more independent to do that. But as with any new program that you're going through, there's going to be growing pains. And it's like we're starting again with a new program. Again, we talked about this two weeks ago when we were talking about our young students coming back in. Well, we have that same, we have that same thing that's happening now with our older students, but the kids are excited to be there and we're excited to have them.
Could you just give us an idea, like say, just so our audience, in case they're wondering, like how does lunch work? I mean, how does that?
Okay, so what happens is, is the kids are in.
Are they here for that or?
Students, there's anywhere from around eight to 10 students in a, in a room and they're spread out more than six feet apart. We have grab-and-go lunches. So the lunches are, either the kids bring their lunches with them.
They all eat at the same time though?
They all, every student eats at the same time. They eat in their fourth, their four, 4C period. They eat in their 4C period for, for lunch in the room that they are in for that 4C period. Spread out, they eat their lunch. We have hallway stations where cafeteria workers have the grab-and-go lunch for the day unless they have packed. And then they eat their lunch there and then they, after they're done, they go back to their, they go to their next fifth-period class.
Is there a lot more packing?
Yes.
Yeah.
There is. There's a lot more packing and Tim will, I'm sure Tim will be able to explain to you in a couple of months, or not a couple of months, next year when we start talking about the finance deficit that we have from our, our lunch program this year and the deficit we're going to have to operate at this year. We're just, more kids are packing than are buying. And I can tell you though, Lynn and her team, they're making lunches that they look good, they taste good, they are.
I've heard great things about the.
Yeah, they're not, they're not the lunches, it's not just like an apple and a PB and J. They're actually healthy foods in a, in a nice package. And we're still, for our remote learners, we're still doing lunch delivery. So in addition to giving food to the kids that are in school, for our remote learners that need it, they're also getting lunch. So logistically, Lynn and Lisa, Lisa over in transportation and in food service, they're doing an incredible job of getting it through. But it's, it's a good program.
Good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bolden? Ms. Jones, anything additionally?
I just wanted to say, remind people that before our next meeting, we will have gone through the November 3rd general election. So not only is it a right, it's a privilege under our democracy. So please make your voice heard through your vote. Of course, there's the presidential election, but there's also many important races at the state level. We have state representatives, state senators for Solon running, judges, as well as several local issues.
Right, so local issues as well.
Yeah, so please make your voice heard through your vote and have a plan, whether it's voting in person down at the Board of Elections, mailing in your ballot, or double-checking your precinct location and voting on November 3rd. Just get out there and get your vote.
Good, thank you. Mr. Patton?
I have nothing further to add. Thanks.
Mr. Heckman?
I agree with Ms. Jones.
Good. Well, I have, we all agree with Ms. Jones. We agree and what we do.
You know, it's interesting, I was watching one of the news programs today and it was only a small percentage of totally the votes that are sent in by mail, but they said, "A lot of people forget to look over the ballot and they miss like putting the date of birth or they don't sign the, they really have to be careful."
Yeah, be careful because you don't want your vote not to count or not to be able to be added in. Very good, thank you. This is our second opportunity for public comment. Is there anything additionally? There isn't? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees or regulated individuals, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee or regulated individual unless such person requests a public hearing. May I have a motion please?
Move.
Moved by Mrs. Thomas.
Second.
Second by Ms. Jones. There will be no business taken at this meeting. The meeting will be adjourned following the executive session. Thank you all.
Roll call.
Oh, we need a roll call, yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Patton.
Yes.
Mrs. Glavine.
Yes, thank you.
At this time, the board is returning from executive session. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting. Move by Mrs. Thomas.
Second.
Second by Ms. Jones. Mr. Pocannon, will you call the roll please?
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hackman?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Klapp?
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for joining us.
Thank you.